Good evening. Welcome to our November 19, 2024 City Council meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Chaplain Lisa Mayo and Councilwoman Diaz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
My kind and heavenly Father, I come to you thanking you for this day, for all the blessings that you're giving us, Lord, and most of all here, Father, to know that we are here to serve you. I ask that you bless our new current president to be, our staff here, the people that serve you in our community in West Covina. Anoint them and bless them with your Holy Spirit and watch over them and give them wisdom to always stay kind. For our whole purpose, Lord, is to serve you. I thank you. In your son's name, I have prayed. Amen.
Gentlemen, please remove your caps. Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Santos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to presentations. The Certificate of Recognition acknowledging Gases Medical Clinic for 36 years of business in West Covina will be rescheduled to a future meeting, but let's move to the presentations that are present today. All right, are we on? Oh, we are on. Fantastic. Our first presentation in what an honor. We are going to recognize and celebrate Eloise Bienvenu 100th Birthday. So, yes. Can the family come up? Yeah. Now, I'll come to you. So Eloise was born on October 7, 1924, so happy belated birthday. Fantastic. In the city of Campbell Sport, Wisconsin, where she lived until she moved to Milwaukee after graduating high school, she met her husband Harold Bienvenue in Milwaukee and they were married in 1946. In 1960, the family moved and settled for good, forever home here in West Covina. Wow. Yeah, no. 64 years. Oh, the stories you could tell about West Covina, and we're gonna ask you to share tonight. Eloise was a member of the St. Christopher's Choir for 48 years and still attends services there and was a volunteer for 20 years at Queen of the Valley Hospital. She spent many years as a president of the local chapter of NAME, a Catholic organization for widows and widowers. Eloise retired as a social worker at Latnerman Developmental Center in 1990 after 17 years of employment there. Her 100th birthday celebration included two former West Covina High School exchange students who we hosted during the 1991-92 school year. One traveled from Zurich, Switzerland, and the other from Berlin, Germany. Eloise has four children. Are they here? Add four children. Jeanne, 77. Is Jeanne here? Can we give it up for Jeanne? Lynn, 74. Philip, 61. And if we can all honor Yvonne, who passed in 2006. Oh, and what is your name? Dan, grandson, Dan. Why don't you stand up and get your applause? Eloise, all four children graduated from West Covina High School. Eloise is still very active and has lived in the same house since 1960. Yes, so Eloise, it'd be my honor if you could take the mic and just share what it's been like. I mean, 100 years. I teach history, so I'll just take a seat and you could take us down and...
Nobody told me I was supposed to say anything tonight. So in 1960, there were only 40,000 people in West Covina. We had a theater wherever this plaza is now, I guess, and just saw the city grow and grow and grow. It keeps growing, so I don't know what else to say. I stayed on the same street. I'm the old lady on the street, the oldest lady and the oldest resident in my little section, which I believe is near Rosario Diaz's. He lives someplace around the corner from me.
Aww.
That's about all I can say. Thank you.
Yes. We sing Happy Birthday. Yes. We are not done.
Councilwoman is singing the Happy Birthday.
Yes, so if we can all join in. We all know the song, right? Yeah, we could put it up on the screen if we're good. Okay, all right. At the count of three. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Eloise. Happy birthday to you. And many more. So on behalf of the City Council and the city of West Covina, this certificate of recognition for your 100th birthday.
Yay.
Do we have the family come up and take a photo? City Council, do you want to join in the... This is not every day.
Holy this way. Holy this.
Huh? The other way?
Yeah. You got him, Rosario?
I was looking for you for something.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
You have hair and you can see everything. You're better than me.
You should have heard him tonight. He's so late. You can barely look at him.
I'm 66. Okay, I'm kind of older than you. You look so young. Congratulations. What kind of food you have? Maybe you can share with us. What kind of food, meal, can keep you so young?
Oh, I don't know.
Ice cream. Oh, I love it.
You get everything.
Happy birthday.
February 8.
Tell us from different...
Yeah. Living in West Covina. Good. They're good. They're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Am I on? Am I on? I turned it on. Am I turning it on now? I'm good. There we are. Look at that. All right, now, we have our proclamation recognizing and acknowledging November as National Diabetes Month, so I'd like to invite Tony Song, West Covina resident and founder of Diabetes Care Partners, to the front. All right. Partners specializing in online patient diabetes wellness and prevention programs and an advocate for all people living with diabetes. November is National Diabetes Month, a time when communities across the country seek to bring attention to diabetes. This year's focus is on taking action to prevent diabetes health problems. Diabetes is a disease that occurs when your blood glucose, also blood sugar, is too high. It affects about 38 million Americans, including adults and youth. Diabetes can damage the eyes, kidneys, nerves, and heart, and it is linked to some types of cancer. But there's good news. Taking charge of your health may help you prevent diabetes health problems. And so, Tony, would you like to share a few words and then we will give you the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, and thank you, Ali, for giving us an opportunity to be here. And Eloise, once again, happy birthday. I think we're talking about health. And somebody said, what's your secret? I heard ice cream, so I think we all go to Matt's place down the street and have some ice cream, right? Yeah. Snickerdoodles. I think you mentioned that there's 38 million people that have diabetes across this country. What's more staggering is that 98 million people have prediabetes. And if you really think about prediabetes and undiagnosed diabetes, it's actually pretty close to one to two, meaning that if you look to the left of you, either you have diabetes or prediabetes, or the person next to you does. Think about that, right? So this is definitely an epidemic. Things have to be done. So the first thing I would recommend is if you have any family history, please get tested every year. That is the biggest thing that you can do, and it's an easy test. Just go to the lab, they draw your arm. And even easier, if there's a health screening somewhere, go get health screened, and not just a finger prick. So if you can do that, we can catch a lot of people with prediabetes and diabetes right from that. Now, if you feel like you're at risk for prediabetes, there's an online test that you can take. It's free. It's a CDC test. You just go down. It's eight questions, and it tells you what your risk is for prediabetes. If that number is high, go see your doctor. Get it checked early. That is the key to preventing anything that's happening with diabetes. Get it checked early, and there's so much that we can do after we get diagnosed. Now, for the people that are diagnosed with diabetes, what I want to say is you don't have to give up the foods that you love. You don't. And so, if you're in that situation, please go get some support from programs that are available in your community. Go out and look for that. Now, if you have prediabetes, make sure you get checked, right? And the last thing I would say is if you need support and you need help, we're located here in West Covina. All you have to do is look up diabetes and West Covina, and we're the top search, Diabetes Care Partners, and we're here to help. We take most medical, and so if you have that type of insurance, we could definitely help you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next presentation, our proclamation recognizing and acknowledging Small Business Saturday. So I'd like to invite Roberto Arnold, West Covina Chamber President. We are thrilled to be celebrating Small Business Saturday, and this time in conjunction with the West Covina Chamber. Small Business Saturday was started by American Express, that small business, to promote and... Right? We all got that black card, right? To promote and support small businesses throughout the United States. It is held a Saturday after Thanksgiving, also after Black Friday, encouraging consumers to shop local and shop small, but spend a lot. Like every year, Small Business Saturday program encourages both small businesses and residents to participate. West Covina small businesses can participate by participating in the city's Small Business Saturday program. I would now like to pass over the mic to Roberto Arnold, West Covina Chamber President, to talk more about the Small Business Saturday program.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna keep this nice and brief. Tonight, I am joined not only with my chamber, but I'm also joined with the Multicultural Business Alliance and small business owners of the chamber. Small businesses are the heart of our community. They create and drive innovation and add vibrancy to the city of West Covina. That's why we proudly support Small Business Saturday, a nationwide event encouraging us to shop local and strengthen our economy. Small Business Saturday is celebrated the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It's a day to appreciate and support small businesses that shape our city. This year, the chamber, city of West Covina, and the Multicultural Business Alliance are proud to feature participating businesses on our social media platforms and website. Additionally, participating businesses will receive Shop Small merchandise courtesy of American Express while supplies last. Yeah, we're limited on that. We have a few businesses that we want to give a shout out to. Sylvia Learning of West Covina, Shining Smiles Orthodontics, Submarine Collection Salon, Top Performance Fit Club, Orchid Ensigns Candles, Bun Street, Flowers by Robert Taylor, Mathnasium, The Cove, CNR Fresh, Coat Ninja West Covina, Cakes by Vena, Hero Tech Solutions. I have two more LJB Strategies and Alpha Prime Health Insurance Solutions. For a full list of the promotions, please visit our website. If your business is interested in participating, the deadline is tonight. Please get it into us so that way we can promote you. And then, even if you're not a business owner, we still encourage everyone and all of the residents of the community, members alike, to get involved by spreading the word and supporting local small businesses these holidays. Thank you for your support, and let's make this Small Business Saturday one to remember. Thank you.
All right, and here's our proclamation proclaiming November 30, 2024, Small Business Saturday. All right, now for our city manager's report, which will be given by our city manager, San Francisco Giant Fan, Paulina.
Good thing we didn't make the bet, and I have to wear something Dodger tonight. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. I have a couple updates that I wanted to share with you and the community. First is a recap of a couple of chamber events that we had this past month. We had the Brew and Brew event at The Cove Wednesday, October 30. It was a networking event for our chamber, and it was a lot of fun. We had a lot of individuals that came and dressed up and participated in the costume contest. So they have events every month. If you're interested in participating in the chamber, please go on the city website, and on our website, there's a page dedicated to the chamber to learn about their upcoming events, how to become a member, and then if you want to be a sponsor as well. So please check that on the website. We also are very excited that Haven City Market did their grand opening on November 2nd. It is West Covina's first food hall, so they have a variety of restaurants, they have a brewery in there, they have all the types of food and different cuisine from different parts of the world. So if you are going out with friends and you can't decide on what to eat, it's a great place to go so you can each get what you are craving and not have to compromise on a selection of cuisine. Haven City will also be having events in their open space outside, so if you go to their website or on their Instagram account, you'll be able to follow and see what events are coming up at Haven City Market. Next is we had our Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11. The ceremony honored the men and women of our armed forces who have served to protect our great nation. Thank you to everyone that attended the event as we honored the lives, fight, and service of our veterans. And we also had a barbecue lunch afterwards, so if you weren't table 10 this year, please make sure you come next year. We do provide attendees a lovely lunch after the service, after the ceremony. Next is we have... This week, just yesterday, West Covina launched our micro transit program, Go West Covina. So this is an on-demand, app-based transit service that operates within a fixed area. This area is north of Merced, all the way up to the north boundary of the city and to the east and west boundaries of the city, so just north of Merced. This is a pilot program that we're partnering with Via. We got a grant for 1.1 million. Part of that was funded through the grant with some matching funds required, but it is a new alternative form of transportation that we are offering our residents, and we encourage everyone to sign up. You can download the app, or there is a service that you can call. All the information is on the city website, but it is going to be a pilot program for 12 months. It's Monday through Fridays. The service is provided 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You can call ahead to schedule rides, or you could do it kind of like similar to the other ride shares, with the exception that it is shared, so it's not a private ride share. You may be in the vehicle with another West Covina resident. It is free until funding runs out, and so we encourage everyone to check it out and try it, see if you like it. With the addition of the micro transit, the city will keep the red and the blue Go West Shuttle routes until the end of January, where they will be phased out, and then the micro transit will be providing service, like I said, from Merced north. The green shuttle will remain, and that will be upgraded with technology, so it'll be more app-based, so residents can see where the shuttle is and the schedule for that green shuttle. We still have our Uber pilot program for seniors and individuals with disabilities that can use the pilot program, and we will continue to provide our dial-a-ride. So this is one of the new transit options in the city. West Covina has been working on an ADA transition plan. We are now asking for the community to provide feedback. We are seeking feedback from our residents and visitors about the accessibility of our programs, about our facilities, parks, and services with people with disabilities. The survey will be available for residents to take until December 27. The QR code is up on the screen. It's also on our website, so if you go to westcovina.org/adaplan, you'll be able to take the survey. So please take the survey. We are seeking our community feedback and input on our facilities, parks, and services that we provide our community. As was mentioned earlier, we have Small Business Saturday, November 30. We encourage everyone to shop local and shop small. The deadline for businesses to participate is today, so hopefully we get a few more businesses to participate after viewing this meeting, and we hope that our residents do shop at our local small businesses and help support them, as they are big contributors to making West Covina a greater place to live, work, and play. In observance of Thanksgiving, we will be closed November 28, and we will be opened on December 2. So not sure if everyone was aware, but we have a direct line of communication with Santa Claus. We have a mailbox right outside City Hall where he has elves come and pick up the letters and take them directly to Santa. So we encourage our West Covina residents to drop off your letters to Santa. Availability is 18th to December 6, and that way Santa Claus can respond to those letters in time. So if you know what you want for Christmas already, you can start submitting your Christmas letter. So as I mentioned, upcoming events, letters to Santa, we have the Small Business Saturday. Our annual Let It Snow will take place December 6, from 6 to 9:00 PM, here at the West Covina Civic Center. We have the Children's Christmas Parade in Santa's Village the following Saturday, December 14, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the historic downtown West Covina. We will also be doing a West Covina Chamber toy drive and a West Covina Chamber end-of-year event, so check the website for more information on those two events. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a lovely Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Before moving to oral communication, we have two adjournments. The first, Michael Miller, former West Covina council member and mayor, passed away on October 22, 2024. Mr. Miller was first elected to serve the citizens of West Covina in March of 2001 and completed his service as mayor to the city in 2005. Mr. Miller has a long history of service to this community. He worked for the city of West Covina's Office of Planning, Public, and Environmental Services, followed by an elected position to West Covina City Council for four years. Mr. Miller's service extends beyond his duties as an elected official and city staff member. He served as director and board member for many clubs and forums, including of the Lions Club, serving as president from 1977 through 78. For his many contributions, Mr. Miller had been named West Covina Citizen of the Year 1998 and West Covina Volunteer of the Year Recreational Services 1999. In addition to his service to the community, Mr. Miller has been a devoted and loving husband and father. Tonight's second adjournment is in memory of Adrian Fuentes, Mallory Santos, and Robert Escalante, the victims of motorcycle fatalities that took place in November of 2023. Our hearts are with the families and loved ones of these community members. As the holidays approach, we recognize the difficulties that the loss of a loved one brings and hope for moments of comfort and solace. We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up at the center row. The timer will start when you reach the podium. Requests to speak on agenda items will be heard prior to requests to speak on non-agenda items. Assistant City Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker is R. Robinson, followed by Lisa Mayo, followed by Douglas Forre.
Good evening, City Health Department. I'm gonna talk about the coronavirus. Bobby... We were talking earlier about taking charge of your health, and I guess Bobby Kennedy has his hands full with the goal of making America healthy again. In the last six weeks, there have been thousands of people in demonstrations in Japan. There's an international crisis summit in Tokyo. There's an international crisis summit in Tokyo. Another atomic bomb is about ready to be dropped on Japan. The form of the bomb is, Japanese doctors have been talking about it. It's a new replicon vaccine. It's a self-amplifying, gene-engineered messenger RNA vaccine that mankind has never experienced before and the Japanese government has decided that we're the lab rats. It's, as in Operation Warp Speed, you know, it's another emergency. And in an emergency, use humans as guinea pigs. Well, the replicon vaccine uses a self-replicating function called Replice to replicate the, it's gene editing for your body. And a lot of Americans believe in body sovereignty and body integrity and, you know, human lives matter. We've already gone through years of Warp Speed and life insurance companies have noticed that birth rates are down and death rates are up. It's, they're, they know what's going on. What do they call it? They do actuarial studies to stay in business, to follow these trends and figure out why. Well, anyway, I'm trying to share what's going to be happening in Japan soon. The vaccine components, you've heard of shedding, may be transmitted from the recipient to other people or animals. I mean, this is, this is a vaccine that's shedding on steroids. Therefore, Dr. Murakami has called for the vaccine to be un-launched until its safety has been confirmed. So let's not risk a new pandemic and there's enough wars going on in the, on the planet. You ever heard of the four horsemen of the apocalypse? Ukraine, the Middle East, including more famine and death. So there's, there's the good news. I hope we can avoid nuclear war during the Christmas, during the Christmas season. Old Man Biden might want to take half the world out with him. I don't know. But I just wanted to alert the public is this newly engineered replicon virus is a whole lot worse than what we've been through. And a lot of, I'm just, my official title is the village idiot, but you may be getting better advice from the village idiot than you, you can from your, your medical practitioners. So Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. And my last 17 seconds are going to go to the mayor.
Thank you. Happy Holidays, Bill.
Lisa Mayo, followed by Douglas Four, followed by Joshua Fuentes.
I don't know if I can top that. Mayor Brian, Mayor Brian Rosario Cantos, who, Lopez, Vaida. My Spanish is not that good, sorry. Anyway, I came here to thank Paulina Morales for being one of our models at our Emblem Tea that we had. And thank you, Rosario, Oli, thank you so very much for coming and supporting. She wa, I'm going to tell her the truth. She was nervous, but she did a great job. And so I really want to thank her because I know the jobs you have are tough. No question about it. I certainly wouldn't want to have it myself. But it was good that she took time out from whatever she has to do with her life to come and do this for the West Covina Emblem Club. And not only that, it was sold out. Yes, it was great. So, and I, this beautiful lady here came with a hat and it reminded me of all the hats that were there and even one had a little bird in there. Did you remember that? So it was really interesting to see these and it was a fun time. And it's good to be able to have some positive thoughts and staying focused on the good in things that we do for the community. And this is going to help us with, of course, our kids that we're, we always adopt a family, Emblem Club for Christmas, for a foster family and military family. And we have it on December the 9th. So I'm inviting all of you to come over at 5 o'clock and the Emblem Club will be more than happy to feed you. Not a lot, but I'll still get something to eat. And come and see the families that it's, it's a beautiful experience to know that you're helping kids and foster children and our military that serves us. Yeah, that's what I'm all about, kids. So if you can, please join us December the 9th at the West Covina Elks Lodge and put it in your calendar and come and join us after 5 o'clock and come and eat with us and meet the families. And two of the Elks members are the ones that are providing the baskets of food and we're also giving a donation. So I'm working with Etwood High School and the principal I met and she's going to help me out with all of that. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Paulina.
Douglas Four, followed by Joshua Fuentes, followed by Herman.
Hello, good evening. My name is Doug Four. I live in District 5, have businesses in District 3. And I love West Covina. I want to thank the City Council for observing the transparency to the community at the last meeting by not adding and voting on agenda items at the end of the last meeting. So thank you guys very much for not doing that. I would also like an answer to the question that I presented at the last City Council meeting regarding the RFQ bidding process of the architectural drawings of the new firehouse. At that meeting, there were additional changes regarding the scope of work and an open negotiation of prices by the City Council prior to the vote. That makes the awarding process unfair to the people, the architecture, that firm that was chosen, as well as unfair to the firms that were not chosen. I will ask again, is the city going to re-fly, re-fly the RFQ so the other architectural firms interested in the project have a fair opportunity to bid? Thank you guys very much.
Joshua Fuentes, followed by Herman, followed by the Pirate.
You say your hearts go out for us. That's a lie. You made promises that you didn't follow. All of you guys did. Police Department, you guys did. You told me you were going to do something about that light. Still, nothing has been done. It's been a year. Saturday will be a year. We have no answers. No one will tell us anything. I have sent emails, I have sent text messages, I have made phone calls to the police department with no responses from anybody. We have no idea what is going on. Not one thing. We know nothing and it's a year. I don't know how you guys can sit up here. You guys make these promises, you guys tell us this stuff and nothing ever happens. We were told that there was going to be some stages of the light getting fixed, right? And nothing's done yet, right? But yet we were told it was going to be done in October. October has come and gone. Now we're in November. When is it, when are you guys actually going to follow through with what you say? Because us, we're, we don't even know what's going on. We can't, we can't even have closure, right? Our son was taken away from us. Our son and his girlfriend, both of them were taken away from us. And nobody, and the way we were treated that night was horrible. You know, I used to think really highly of this place, the police department, everything. I don't anymore. The way they treated my son, they treated him like he was a criminal. You know that? You know, you had officers making comments about him while he laid on the ground dead. Okay? Oh, maybe it was the kid we were chasing the other night that we couldn't catch, right? We had one of your sergeants that told me to my face, we both lost something today. You lost your son and I lost my Thanksgiving dinner with my family. That is bullshit. He said that to my face and I had to walk away. I don't know how you guys can sit here and be that way. Your, your police chief, okay? He told me he's going to have answers for me. I met with him on August 26th. Six to eight weeks, he'll have answers for me. How long has it been? That's 11 weeks now, right? He won't answer my phone calls? He won't answer my emails? Nothing. That's a disgrace. And in turn, then we find out that you guys turned my son's police report over to a different department who's now overseeing it? But yet I'm being told that we're waiting for a toxicology report that I got back in January for my son. You guys should be ashamed of yourself, ashamed of yourself. There's nothing to celebrate. I'm sorry, there's not. I mean, you guys are all going to have a happy Thanksgiving. We're not. What is that? That's the day our son died. Right? We turned stuff in to the city manager about a light that we were told was fixed back in 2016, 17. We haven't got an answer yet. Because if that is in fact the case and that light was supposed to be fixed back then, my son wouldn't be dead right now because there would have been a turn arrow at that light and that person wouldn't have turned in front of him. Why can't we get any answers? That's all I'm trying to get at. I can't get any answers from anybody. Nobody. I can't get anyone to return a phone call to me? Nothing. It's, it's sad. It really, really is. I don't know what else to say, but it's, it's, we have no closure whatsoever, one bit. We don't know what's happening with it. We don't know if anything's going to happen to the gentleman that turned in front of them, right? There's so much that went on that night that it, we can't get no answers on anything, right? I mean, we've met multiple times with the police department. We've met multiple times with the chief, sergeants, captains, right? No answers, nothing. We don't get anything back. We'll look into it. Well, how long does it take to look into it? Right? I mean, same with, same with, we've had, we've had meetings with you guys, right? We've had meetings with, with, with the, with the managers. We've had big meetings with everybody and now have no answers whatsoever on any of this stuff. You know how hard that is? It's, I, I know it sounds like I'm ranting, but it's, I am a broken father, I am. I have two other children that I still have to care for. I have a wife that I have to care for. So I try to be strong for them, but it's hard. You have a child that's taken away from you, that is no longer here. He doesn't have anyone to speak for him, right? He has no one to speak for him. The night of the accident, it was deemed his fault, right? Because one of your officers wrote down in his report that my son ran a red light, even though the sergeant on duty, on duty, watched the video and told us the light was yellow that he went through. But for six months, the report showed that my son ran a red light. So for six months, everybody's saying that, oh, it was the kid's fault. Does anybody care anymore that it's not his fault? No. They did six months ago. Oh, that's what he gets, right? He's a young kid, right? But now six months later, when the police report, partial, partial police report comes out, it's saying that, oh, it was a yellow light. Does anybody care from six months ago? No. Because they've already said what they had to say. There was no one there to defend him. Nobody. We just, I don't know. We, there's something, I wish I could get some answers from you guys. That's all I'm asking. If I could get some answers, I'd really, really appreciate it because we don't have, we don't have anything, right? We don't have anything at all.
Herman, followed by the Pirate, followed by Jeff Aguino.
What's the secret about West Covina? We have a manager who can't resolve some of these little issues like, how do we fix a light? Well, I'm sorry, but we don't have a budget to fix the light, right? But yet, residents of West Covina, residents of California and the taxpayers are paying the taxes for a light, Paulina. No, but you got the time to spend it to go to a hat fashion. Am I right or wrong? But yet you won't sit down to maybe dole through the payroll there and maybe cut maybe 1% out of maybe some fraudulent base policy under your nonprofits. We don't need them. The taxpayers can handle the bills. It's just the wasteful console misappropriations of those funds. Why couldn't you get a light? Why couldn't you clean the weed abatement? Why couldn't you do your job when you went to that Dodger game and left us all alone in the dark? You see, Mr. Mayor, the issue is... There is no issue. It's all solved by money. Money which turns the city, money which turns your heads and money that some of you, I feel, have placed in your own nonprofit funding. Where's our shakers at talking about the budget? We need them to get up there and, and show the facts. I don't like to show the facts because I already know the fact that we're becoming a criminal enterprise of patting and waxing our hands with all the taxpayers' money because they don't know a darn thing. Right, Brian? You think you could pull the rug over our heads because you think Crazy Horse was crazy when he surrounded Custard and annihilated the United States Army for the crimes they did to the Native Americans of this country? The land of this people that you talk about, Brian? A child that lives in this land that could have been resolved? All to the fact if Pauline would have just simply pulled out of the budget to have your municipality people get out there and fix the light. A simple maintenance like that. We had a month ago, people in here about the weed problem. If you can't smoke it, then yank it. If you can't yank it, then get rid of them, fire them. There's all kinds of people illegally here wanting to work. But are you going to hire them because of their legal status? No, right? The city of West Covina will not hire them because you're not a sanctuary city. Or maybe I'm wrong. You might be a sanctuary city behind the corruption of Gavin Newsom, right? Wasn't it he who promised us better rants, free rants, as a matter of fact, which, that's a lie, comes out of my taxes? Food? I'm tired of your cheap food. I want to go eat at City Haven. Just roll me a check out of your miscellaneous funds so I can go there and buy me a nice dinner, as I heard from Pauline, the manager. And third, what did your former Vice President say after three and a half years of failure? Ah, ha, 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 ha. I'm doing my part. Me and, me and the, and the 46th President dumb, dumb Biden have done our part to make America great. Stop stealing the line. Stop stealing the line. We need reform. We need a reform that stands up for justice and takes a stance against injustice. I don't care how many illegals come into this country, as long as they come into the proper channels so that this little boy, that little girl from West Covina have a good education as to, opposed to having their education subsidized because we have to teach them a second language to understand, to get the culture of education, right? No, the culture is, you're in my America, woo. This is my America, their America, our America, and we are the people of America. Remember that, Brian. Remember that.
The Pirate, followed by Jeff Aguino, followed by Matthew.
Remember that, woo. Remember that, Wu.
I feel like what I have to say doesn't mean that much after hearing the, the child that was killed at the light, but, um, greetings, mayor and council members. I'm not saying my name because I've gotten bullied and hate mail. Not that I'm really that scared, but you guys know me pretty well. Um, so apparently our city meetings are looking more like the South Korean parliament than a small SGB council meeting. I myself, I'm glad the chairs are bolted to the ground right now. Um, you know, it's like, are we gonna start throwing water balloons like they did in Taiwan? I feel like I should invite the rugby players to show us the Haka War Dance like they did in New Zealand. You know, that will really put West Covina on the map for sure. Um, but with all the violence and everything, I'm, I am counting on Chief Bell before he leaves to make sure that that investigation goes into neutral hands and, um, violence to the point of serious injuries unacceptable. Um, and I know I don't have all the details, but I'm just hoping that it goes into neutral hands and is investigated. But I just wanna say, I don't know what has happened to the city. I, I know there's a group of people that have hatred towards Tony Wu and then they have a Tony Wu group or whatever it is. But I'm just gonna tell you guys all that those of us peasants are tired of it. Um, I don't know what the heck is going on between all y'all. The city is divided and most of us aren't sure why. I mean, we're getting to the point where I get hate mail for not voting for anyone. I'm pressured for telling people who choose to vote and put signs in their yard to not letting anyone bully them. And I get bullied. Mind you, I'm a pirate, so I don't care, but, um, I get bullied because I, even a friend I chose to have, like, we're not even talking politics. And, uh, you know, I have some crazed people in this city coming after me. And, and speaking of hate mail, okay, the pirate is a symbol of not being influenced by dorks who care so much about politics that they sell their soul. I'm piratical, not political, and piratitude is a way of life. And there's a lot of us in the SGB who have been friends since 1975. And I'd also like to mention to the person who wrote the hate mail to me that they might wanna be careful disparaging my terminally ill husband because he is tougher and scarier than anyone who wrote the letter, even at death's door. Okay? And that being said, I wanna just say, it's time for the city to come together. We shouldn't hate each other because of politics or whatever the hell is really going on here. And I still don't know what it is, but there has to be something us peasants don't know. And, uh, I have not even gone to the Historical Society because of the pressure, the bullying, the hate mail. And it's not that I'm scared, it's just that it's not gonna be fun for me to go. And I also wanna thank Ollie for communicating with us. Um, the rest of you need to follow his example and things will get better. The people have spoken, so please communicate with us. And, um, and I also, I know that Chief Bell is retiring and I know that he has always been able to answer my questions and I appreciate that about him. And I also wanna thank Letty for openly rebuking Gascon. So I'm not that thankful, though. So come on, West Covina, we need to come together. The election's over. And, and I'm talking about all of us who have not been so nice to each other. We're neighbors and we need to come together no matter what we're thinking. So that's it.
Jeff Aguino, followed by Matthew, followed by Michael Stephon.
Hello. How you doing? That was a great introduction to exactly what I wanna talk about, the bullying in the city of West Covina. And I'm glad this election is over. Congratulations to Brian Guterres, Mrs. Diaz. You know, they won, the other ones are losers, so go away. It's over with. Stop the bullying. Stop the stupid racist remarks. You know, it's getting ridiculous that you can't sit in your own, and it's people hide behind social media websites and go around and poke at people. They gotta go to a planning commission and raise a big hell that's talk, call a person a liar when they can't even prove it. And if they did, could prove it, why don't you just prove it instead of just suggesting it? It makes no damn sense. You know, you had a nice smile on your face a little while ago, but you don't now. I don't understand that. Do I intimidate you or something? That's good, because I don't, I'm not here to intimidate you.
We're, we're good, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay? Because, you know, it's getting really just ridiculous. My wife's been called a Nazi. She's been called a sellout, a racist. I can't, the, the things that shit's just ridiculous. And then all of a sudden, these bullies get beat up by somebody else and now they wanna cry wolf. Oh, I've been hurt, I'm hurt. What a bunch of, excuse me. I can't believe it. And I'm sure glad this election is over because it just, it's just gotten obnoxious. And I'm sure you're gonna probably hear people come up here and say exactly the opposite, how, you know, they've been bullied. But the other side of that is, this talk is cheap. People could say anything they want. I just let it roll off my back. They know where I live. If they really wanna come and say something to me, they could come to my house. You know, I'll have, I'll have an open discussion with them. I put a sign in front of my house that said Trump in 2016. He wasn't even the president yet. And I had a kid come up to my house, call me a racist, tear my sign down. Then two weeks, three weeks later, some more kids grabbed my sign and then they had to call me a racist. They said, oh, I like tacos. They don't even know if I'm a Mexican or not, but they had to say it anyways. They said it right to my face. And all of a sudden, they're just saying, my sign's right there, your kids are right there, who took my sign? But I'm the one that's making the fight? I'm not making a fight. Give me my sign back. This was 2016. He wasn't even the president. And then we go through all this stuff all over again, and the city of West Covina. Sorry, but your jobs aren't that important. Your jobs are not important. She has the most important job to keep the fund, the, the funds going. You guys are just here to try to make things work properly, but she's got the most important job. And the city, I, you know, I'm sorry for the gentleman who lost his son. My brother lost his legs on Velinda and Cameron. And you know what? Back then, like, maybe five months later, they put a turn signal at that, at that intersection. My brother was only 17 years old. And his legs were cut right off. But the same thing, a man took a person, took a left hand, turned in front of them. So, you know, you guys, you need, really need to start working together and stop, and stop this hatred of people saying you're against him and he's against you and so on and so on. You need to stop it. This is your stop. Don't sit there and say that. Don't think or suggest that all this is happening because the fool's not for Wu can't get their stuff what they want. Okay? They didn't get their way. So they say, make a sign. That's just hatred and bullying. You know, people putting up signs and, and sending out post-its about somebody trying to win an election, that's just hatred. If you can't win on your own merit, then shame on you. Thank you very much.
Matthew, followed Michael Stephon, followed by Desiree Fuentes.
And Jeff, you're always welcome to my house. I know.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. As a lifelong resident of this beautiful city, I'm both embarrassed and appalled by the recent actions of sitting city council members and their family members. The divisive rhetoric and false narratives being spread have only deepened divisions and eroded trust in our leadership. It's painfully clear that some elected officials have become silent bystanders, allowing our city's well-being to decline instead of stepping up as proactive voices for the community. Even more troubling is the behavior of individuals like Councilwoman Diaz, who not only continues to pursue personal grudges under the guise of public service, but has shown no culpability for the harm caused by her actions and those of her family members. This lack of accountability for their behavior, including targeted attacks and harassment of other community members, has created an environment of fear, mistrust, and division. West Covina's lack of oversight and accountability has allowed this toxic dynamic to persist, further eroding trust in city governance and undermining progress. What's more alarming is the message this sends to our community and the next generation. When an elected official refuses to take responsibility for their actions or the actions of their family, it sets a dangerous precedent. It tells our youth that deflection, evasion, and a lack of integrity are acceptable in leadership. This is entirely the wrong example for our city's future leaders. Who should, who should be learning that accountability, respect, and service to others are core values of public office. Councilwoman Diaz's continued presence on the city council not only undermines the city's credibility, but also poses a serious risk to the community's future. Her preoccupation with personal grievances has left, has left critical issues like public safety, homelessness, and infrastructure neglected. The city council mired in division and dysfunction cannot make sound decisions to protect and serve its residents, leaving West Covina vulnerable to further decline. Enough is enough. The divisiveness, evasion of accountability, and misuse of office must end immediately. Councilwoman Diaz, Councilwoman Diaz's actions have demonstrated an inability to serve the best interests of the community. It is time for her to step down from the city council and allow West Covina to begin rebuilding the trust, unity, and leadership that our residents deserve. Our city deserves better than this toxic environment. We need leaders who, who take responsibility for their actions, prioritize the greater good, and restore the values of respect and service to our city. Councilwoman Diaz's resignation is critical, is the critical first step toward healing the community, setting a better example for our future generations, and putting West Covina back on the path to progress. Thank you.
Michael, followed by Desiree, followed by Mario.
Yes, I've been a resident of West Covina for 63 years. It was my grandson that was killed at that light. And I'm just really disappointed with the way this police department and the council member. When we came in after 10 months of a meeting, my daughter threw out paperwork showing that the light was completed and paid for. We were supposed to call back, never called back. Police department was supposed to call. Said, here's my phone number, I'll never let this happen again. Phone went dead. My son's the chief of the CHP. Day after the, we had our meeting after 10 months. They turned it over to the CHP. When I got a phone call from the CHP finding out you guys just kicked it off after 10 months, it makes me wonder what's going on with this city. After 63 years, I've caught three guys doing bad shit in my, in, in my neighborhood. Twice I called the police, twice they came out, towed the car once, let the guys go, never came back and questioned. Another time they came, I took pictures of the guy. They go, do you know what the guy looks like? I go, I got, I got a picture. Well, they took off to go chase the guy, never came back. Third time I took care of it myself. So the only thing I can say about West Covina, if you have a problem, don't call the police, call ICE. Because I don't know what's wrong with this city. I mean, after 63 years, the things you guys have done and why it's been paid for and completed, and you guys put a light at eighth of a mile down the street that turns into a mountain. Why is there a light turning into a mountain? When you have a street that you have to cross four lanes and a driveway that's so steep because of BKK dump that was there? You have to stop before you go in the driveway. Your management is crazy. And my whole family's electricians. My little brother's MIT electrical engineer. When I told him about this, he says, fix the light. Everything's there. All you gotta do is replace six lenses and go to the box and do some, any moron can do it within a day. But you guys are saying, oh, it'll be another $120,000. That's what's wrong with the system. Elon Musk can send a rocket up and NASA takes 10 times as much money to send a rocket up that Elon Musk can send up. It's the waste. It's the waste you guys put in everything you do. You can't finish nothing and it's just a waste. I just had to get it off. I'm really disgusted with this city after 63 years.
Desiree Fuentes, followed by Mario, followed by Sherry Barrellan.
Hello. My son's Adrian Fuentes. So I wanna ask each one of you, for the last year, what has any one of you done for our city? Because you wanna know what I've done for the last year? I've planned my son's funeral. I buried my son, buried his girlfriend, buried another resident of the city that passed away the night after my son. Celebrated every single holiday at the cemetery. Celebrated my son's, what would have been his 21st birthday. What would have been his girlfriend's 21st birthday? All without my son. What has any one of you done? Because what I have found out in the last year, I have no assistants, I have no secretaries, I have no help. But I have found out that Amar in Westport has been an issue since 1988. I have documents of it from the city. I found out that three times this light was supposed to be paid for. Three separate years, $140,000 for one year, $140,000 another year, and $145,000 another year. I, the documents that prove the light was already paid for and completed. So I'd like to know exactly what has any one of you done for the city? The, I mean, I also found out that there were grants for, for $3 million for left turn phasing. And I do know the, the, what, Citrus and Cameron, that light was, is part of underground, but that's under a separate grant. I have the documents to prove that's a separate grant than the one that's for the $3 million. I have these documents to prove that this light should have already been put in. Years ago, Wu was on council, he actually, he, he voted against it, but it was a four to five unanimous vote. But the light was approved for Amar in Westport. It was approved from city council. That was years ago. So I would like to know what is actually gonna be done? Because, I mean, not one of you had to go through every single holiday or a 21st birthday or bury your children, but I have. Thank you.
But at her meeting with you guys. Okay.
Mario, followed by Sherry Barrellan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Tabatabai, members of the city council and city staff. Said it before, say it again. Life isn't fair and we are not all created equal. We as individuals can strive for fairness and treat people equally. The last time I stood before you, I said these words in reference to Bill Elliott's outburst at the city's, city's failure to hold him accountable. Today, I'm compelled to say them again, but this time I'm referencing the violent attack on John Shoemaker and Steve Bennett during the planning commission meeting on October 22nd. After that meeting, I received multiple calls from residents who shared their frustrations. Many of them used to attend city council meetings regularly, but have chosen to stay home, not because they lack interest, but because of threatening and destructive behavior like what we've seen from Bill Elliott during oral communications. This intimidation has driven people away from engaging in their local government and that is unacceptable. This pattern of behavior has been ongoing for years and was on full display at a recent city council meeting. Bill disrupted oral communications while another speaker was at the podium. Despite the mayor calling a racist and instructing that bill be removed, he refused to leave. The same officer who intervened during the October 22nd fight attempted to remove him that evening, but was also defied. Ultimately, the chief of police spoke with Bill and then told Mayor Brian Tabatabai that Bill had promised not to disrupt again and should be given another chance. This lack of accountability reflects a deeper problem. When bad behavior goes unchecked, it only worsens over time. If you don't address it, it's only a matter of time before it escalates and someone gets hurt. That's exactly what happened on October 22nd, when Steve and John were violently attacked. This incident didn't happen in a vacuum. It's the result of years of inaction and enablement. In addition to these troubling incidents, we're also seeing increased crime in our city. Recent example is a bullet that I found pierced through the window of the West Covina Historical Society Museum, damaging one of the portraits of El Beach Yah. These incidents are a stark reminder that crime and disorder in West Covina are on the rise and our focus as a community should be on preventing them, not just reaching to them after the fact. This brings me to Sir Robert Peels, the father of modern, the father of modern policing and his ninth principle. To recognize always that the test of police efficiency is the absence of crime and disorder and not the visible evidence of police action in dealing with them. In other words, the measure of effective policing is not how many arrests are made or how visible the response is, but in the safety and security of the community itself. Unfortunately, West Covina, we are failing at that test. Compounding this failure is the recent Instagram post by West Covina Police Department proudly announcing their feature in the episode of Cops TV. announcing their feature in the episode of Cops TV. While I understand their desire to highlight the work of our officers, I question whether chasing movie popularity aligns with the mission of modern professional police force. In fact, the entertainment value of shows like Cops runs directly counter to Peels' ninth principle. These programs strive on sensationalizing, sensationalizing visible police action, often prioritizing spectacle over substance. Instead of chasing the spotlight, I suggest that West Covina PD focuses energy on preventing crime and addressing the issues that actually matter to residents, like the rising crime rate, public safety, and community trust. Leadership requires accountability and a focus on outcomes, not optics. Instead of prioritizing public safety and fairness, we've seen favoritism, complacency, and a lack of decisive action. This violent articulation at the planning commission meeting, the bullet incident, and now this pursuit of media recognition are not isolated. They are symptoms of a city that has allowed disorder and dysfunction to fester. The time to act is now. The council must ensure impartiality in the investigation of the October 22nd incident by transferring the case to Sheriff's Department, something I feel that should have happened the next day, not a month later. Moreover, the city must take proactive steps to prevent future conflicts of interest to hold disruptive behavior accountable and to reduce crime and disorder. If we fail to ask, if we fail to act, we risk sending a dangerous message that some individuals are above the law, that bad behavior will be tolerated, and that public safety is not a priority. This erodes the public trust and undermines the fairness and equality that we should all strive for. West Covina deserves better. It's time for this council to lead by example for fairness, safety, and for the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I'm going to speak now. I've lived in this city for 68 years. I've seen a lot of councils come and go, I've seen a lot of police chiefs come and go, city managers come and go. My heart goes out to this gentleman. He's been trying to get this report done for a year, and now the police department's going to transfer it out? What's going on? If that had been any one of your children, you know that that light would have been fixed the next day, regardless of what the money that this city costs. But you are going to get your light on Cameron and Citrus, and you want one, Ollie, you want one on Vine and Montezuma Way. I will bet you that your lights get done before the one on Puente and Vincent, and his light gets fixed. I'll put money on it. You guys should be ashamed of yourself. I was also involved in that discrepancy on October 22nd. Everyone keeps saying it's politics. It's not just politics, people, it's a like and dislike of people that get angry and attack people and say things that are untrue, and you can't prove it, but you can get up here and you could just humiliate anybody. I am disgusted that the police department did not know of the conflict of interest, which they did, and have this case the next day thrown to industry sheriff. I've already been there twice. City manager, you could have overridden it, and you could have also said, we really should take this out. A month later, after the incident, there is no report available to the two victims who were beat up? This is ridiculous. Everyone says you need to do better, you start needing to stop your politics, stop your favoritism, and doing the job for the city of West Covina, not your own personal interest.
I have no further speaker slips, mayor.
City manager, will you please respond? And can you start by responding to the Fuentes family?
Yes, and, yes, to the Fuentes family. We are sorry for your loss, we understand it's the anniversary coming up, and it's going to be a very sad time, especially around the holidays, not to have a loved one. I know it's been a year, and you've been seeking answers, and, you know, unfortunately, the reports take the time that they do because they want to do a thorough job. But I do believe that the police department will be reaching out to you and providing you an update on that report. So that's all I can share regarding that investigation. And then...
What about their light?
Oh, thank you. So in October, the council did approve some temporary improvements to the intersection, and so those should be done by spring of 2025. We are also continuing to seek funding for a permanent left turn signal at that intersection. So we are continuing to work towards that. We, I believe, have applied for a grant for, that would help fund that intersection in addition to others throughout the city. But it would include the Amar-Westport intersection. And then, in addition to the incident that happened, members of the police department are responsible for investigating any felony misdemeanor or infraction committed within the city. Following incidents, the police of chief may decide whether West Covina Police Department or an external law enforcement agency will handle any necessary follow-up investigation. Initially, the investigation was retained by the West Covina Police Department, and after initial reports were completed. However, after further review and consultation with the sheriffs regarding the case, Chief Bell decided to transfer the investigation to the Sheriff's Department. All follow-up investigations will now be conducted by the Sheriff's Department, and any comments or findings will come from their investigation. And as it's an ongoing investigation, that's all I have to comment on that incident. And that, I believe, concludes my comments tonight.
Okay. We will now move to our consent calendar, council. Is there anything you would like to pull from the consent calendar? I will be pulling item number seven. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items number one through eight, with the exception of number seven?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz, a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viatto to approve consent calendar items one through six, and number eight, leaving out item number seven, which was pulled by Mayor Calderon Tabataba. Before I take role, I'd like to read the title of the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 2524, an ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, amending Division Two Purchasing Procedures of Article Seven Purchases and Sales of Chapter Two Administration of the West Covina Municipal Code. Councilman Katos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viatto?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Items pass 5-0, mayor.
Okay, item number seven, if I could have Fire Chief Vince Capelli come down. Have a few questions regarding the SAFER grant.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, citizens.
Good evening. I understand that the item, the city manager, you have suggested that we decline the grant, so I just wanted to hear some information. So currently, the staffing is 70 firefighters. This grant would move us to 86. So first off, Chief Capelli, if you could explain why you deem it necessary to add that personnel, right? That's the reason we apply for the grant? And so can you speak to that?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me speak. We, at the fire department, we're always seeking ways to bring in things to the fire department to help serve the community and gather resources. I think 2018 was the last time we had to roll back one of the fire engines. We shut down our fifth fire engine and took us below standards to where we response measures that are identified to serve the community, and we identified that we're not meeting the percentiles to respond to the amount of time. We could do that with other resources. So we reached out to FEMA, and they have resources called the SAFER grant, which is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and EMS Resources. And they'll give us funds to fund personnel to come on the fire department to increase our resources available. And this was going to increase a fire engine and a paramedic ambulance to respond to calls that would help us have a quicker response time for EMS calls and quicker response times for fires. Some of the standards that we want to meet is the first arriving EMT or paramedic within five minutes, less than 300 seconds. Our time average of 2024 is six minutes and 23 seconds, and we'd like to get at least one fire engine on a fire in less than four minutes. And our average time, our average amount of time to meet that standard is 29%, and we'd like to do it in 90% of the time. So we thought this would be a way to help bring the staffing up to hopefully meet those standards.
Okay, and so, city manager, your recommendation is that we decline the grant. Can you go into the reasoning why you found this grant would not be a benefit to the
The city of West Covina has a history with the SAFER grant. We've applied for the SAFER grant two times before and received it. The first time, I don't know if it was a misunderstanding of the grant, but the city was required to maintain the additional firefighters hired through the grant for three years. However, as year two and three, the amount of funding diminished, and the burden for the city to pay for that cost increased. Then the second time that the SAFER grant was applied for, there was issues where side letters hadn't been established with the association, the firefighters association, and because of that, we were required to maintain those firefighters beyond that three-year term, which increased costs for the city. And so they have the SAFER grant in the past, which the city has caused the city to spend money that was not anticipated when they applied for the grant.
Okay, so then, in your opinion, is the added staffing not necessary for the city? The additional 15 personnel?
I think all departments in the city can benefit from additional staffing, including our police department.
Okay, and in this case, the fire department. So then, this grant would cover that personnel for, I guess, Chief Capelli, would cover the personnel for three years, is that?
Yeah, so the FEMA Assistant Firefighters Grant SAFER, this funding period, the formance period, they pay for all three years for the entire time of it, there's no matching by the city. However, if you have to hire personnel, which would require to have three captains, three engineers, and personnel to help manage the whole situation to get a fire engine, we have to cover the difference between the cost of a firefighter, the cost of a captain, which is part of the award, which wasn't in the past, if this one does require the city and allow the city to do it. So we hire 15 firefighters, we would promote three captains, three engineers, but the burden on that would cost the city. And I think the overall, after three years, the cost to the city would be roughly about $4 million, I think would it would be if we took on the grant. And we would apply for the grant for multiple years, again and again, too. The city can come to a ability to pay for itself. The ultimate goal is for the fire department to serve the community with the proper resources adequately, keep people safe. And we need these personnel to do that, and we need to find ways to have that revenue ourselves, and this is one way to get us there until we can figure out those things.
Okay. Your chief concern, city manager, is that we will have to delve into the general fund if we did accept this grant?
There's a couple concerns. Yes, there is going to be deficit spending. The other thing is, I'm not sure, when the application was submitted, if there's alternative staffing that was considered when they applied for it. In addition, potential or future layoffs that we've gone through in the past, where in year three, we would have to let go of those additional employees. And then the other issue right now as well is that there's no side letters with the associations, which would then further exacerbate the layoff issue in year three.
Okay. I think, just one of my concerns, and I guess this was a question I'd had for you, is is that like, is that a policy that we're going to have as a city that any applications for grants that will cover the employment of staffing, if we are anticipating that money's going to come out of the general fund, then we will not accept those types of grants? Because I understand, you know, as we're looking forward to creating a health department, we are looking to fund that exclusively through grants, and many of those grants function similar to the SAFER grant, where at a certain period, in order to maintain the staffing, cities have had to go into their general fund, right? So City of Pasadena yearly has to go into their general fund. A City of Long Beach actually had to fire 70 staff members from their public health. So I guess, thinking long-term, is this a policy that we're trying to set in place to be fiscally responsible, that any grants we apply for, we are only going to accept those that will not cost us out of the general fund? Or is it just for this grant, and we can anticipate later on accepting grants that will anticipate costing in the general fund?
I think that would ultimately be a council policy decision, if they want to have that kind of policy. What I'm looking at tonight is this particular grant, and the issues in addition to the deficit spending that is arising, and in addition to that, the history that the city of West Covina has had with this exact grant, and the additional costs that it's placed as a burden on the city. And so with this particular grant, that's why I'm recommending that we don't accept it.
Okay, and just the other cost item that you, I believe you mentioned, I think it's in the report, is the pension obligation piece, which isn't covered. Can you speak to that?
And if I could have Stephanie Sigma, our finance director, she'd be able to speak to that. But yes, that would be an added cost that's not calculated in this, because they would be considered employees of the city for those three years, and then we would be obligated for those pension...
Yeah, can you, thank you.
Yes, just to speak on that, because due to the crunch time that myself and I believe the city manager got to review this, we weren't able to fully get with CalPERS to see what the full impact on our unfunded liability would be. But just to give you some perspective, they estimate a 2.8% in growth rate, and so to add 15 personnel would be over a 20% in growth rate. So that would probably substantially increase our unfunded liability for public safety.
Okay. And then, so we would anticipate this with any employee that we brought in that was covered through a grant? Is that, again, as we move forward, is that part of, when we're thinking of financial responsibility, that whoever we bring in, covered by grant, we would have that unfunded liability?
There's always an additional when you increase payroll, but typically, if, over the years, we may have increased with grants, in particular, one by one, two by two, 15 is a huge increase.
Right, as would be in an entire new bureaucracy. Right? Yeah, we can anticipate what that would cost. Okay. Oh, yes, Mayor Pro Tim Wu. You can ask your, yes.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Okay, I think, I have a question, because I never heard about city manager, okay, or finance department apply this several grand. Okay, I went through several grand back in 2018, and because of layoffs, this and that, we don't have money, and we have to cut 10%, and we went through hell. So I went through that 2018. So I know the several grand, just like, you drinking the salt water, try to stop the thirst because you want to increase the staffing, but the staffing is only 36 months. And now they let with 15, 16 additional staff, then you need to have additional chief, captain, this and that, and plus, who pay for that over time? So a lot of, hard's the budget. And by the way, do we have enough of our capital improvement for our, what we tried to do improve our station? Do we have a room to put so many people? Especially current, we have a couple of, we have to build a station one... Especially current, we have a couple of, we have to build a station one. Okay, we have to build training facility. Okay, do we have that kind of capacity and to do it? But that's why I'm wondering, when you guys to have this, have you guys analyzed? Okay, and so you can have a full support, okay, full report to us. So this is a point come. So when you have, okay, these several grand in your, on your desk? Because I never see you ever mention anytime to the city council that the city management thinking about, okay, this grant, and then do we have additional funding? Okay, just, okay, receive this grant and plus additional pay? Okay, the grant is not given for free. The grant give to you, then you need to order supporting funding for the personnel. And then, and the more important thing, that's what I worry about after three years, and we're going to go through again, because we, another $3, $4 million we don't have in our budget. And how can we foresee three years later, to how is our financial, okay, situation? Okay, can we, can we, okay, and afford the addition this personnel? So anyway, okay, City Manager, can you answer my question? When you ever, okay, because I never heard about, I know some FFA talked to me about they applying several grand, but I never heard about from the city management team.
I was provided the grant last month.
So still 30 days ago?
Yeah, I don't have the exact date.
So basically, this is thing is from the fire department never discussed with you?
I was provided the application for the first time about a month ago.
So with all grants, fire and police department provide, even like the one that was approved tonight, we bring them to council, the governing body to be approved. After we do it, we research and try to get grants all the time, just like the last SAFER grants that were approved, the last AFG grants, the OTS grants, SHSHAT grants, all of them, come to you for approval after we've already been awarded, just like this one was as well.
I understand, Chief.
Same as they all were.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. But this way, including the personnel, 16 personnel, that you're going to additional hire, is that supposedly you should talk to the HR and talk about additional funding we need to prepare? If we want to prepare this, please present to us how much we call service for additional captain, additional assistant chief, additional, any of, okay, from this grant? How much we from general fund? And how about after three years later, what happened? Okay, and are we going to lay them off? Do they have a contract? They only get hired for three years? Okay, so the contract three years after that? And we don't want to go through what I went through in 2018, then they show over here very angry, and then because they will be laid off. So the situation, this is what I went through in 2018, I really don't want to go through again unless we have, okay, and a solid funding that after three years, okay, all these people will stay with us. And plus, we have a capacity to keep all these people in all our station. I think a lot of station is kind of need repair and remodel, and to make sure the capital improvement for all this station. I think this is something and prioritized, okay, priority, what we need to do is build a station one. Okay, and we have a beautiful station one, because right now they're on the trailer on the city yard. Okay, I think that the focus should be there. So I don't know, now we focus to go to potentially hire more staff. So Chief, where we put those staffing?
So we already had this engine company in place for many years in the city, and we already have location for it to go. They would just go back in the same location they were, which is Engine Two at Station Two, and the facilities would meet the needs for the engine company. There is ways that we identified when we met the city manager to go with this, that bring in an extra ambulance, an ambulance to transport. My recommendation is actually bring in more than just the one and fund it ourselves. I have lots of proposals that we could bring in the revenue. I anticipate that if we did bring in the ambulance, it actually covered the money ourselves, and the report was generated would have showed you that the revenues needed to support this would not have, in my opinion, impacted the general fund in that ambulance transport. So we bring in revenue for that, where we don't have to give them out to private ambulance companies, which are in business for that. They transport, and we can't do it, because we only have three.
Another question.
I think we've known we need more than that for many, many years, and that would increase the revenue to help cover the costs, whatever we did.
Got it. Thank you, Chief. But did you, okay, you're talking about, you know, when you apply this grant, okay, for additional 16 people? Okay, and what additional cost of general fund? Did you bring the number, or have you have our finance director provide you the number? How much we have the additional from this? Okay, and then after three years, do you have a letter say three years, their contract only three years, after three years, they need to be laid off? Okay, because we don't have the funding, additional, I don't know, $3, $4, $5 million?
So we've been coming to the city council and management explaining that our needs to serve the residents of West Covina with proper inadequate responses are what we need. We've been saying, I've been saying it for over five years.
Chief, okay, I'm sorry. My question is, because we are city council, we not in the number, the number we provide by the, our finance director, did you talk to her how much it will cost, okay, additional beside the grant, and including the overtime calculation? So they can bring to us how much it will cost us additional charge for funding? Okay, and do we have that number?
Yes. So in our calculations, numbers we did get from the finance department, what AR fees for services are, what are costs for personnel, the fully burdened?
Okay, thank you. And the finance director, do you have the number, additional, how much it will cost us? Just beginning to have 16 and plus, okay, chief, assistant chief and captain and this and that, since you have additional 60 people coming, and overtime? And this, okay, chief, provide you his calculation, or have you calculated how much it will cost us additionally?
So I didn't have the opportunity to try to figure out overtime, but I did provide the fully burdened rate for just the salaries and benefits for the personnel that he presented in the report. And over the course of the time, it is provided as one of the options in here, and the fiscal impact is over 4.3 million to the general fund.
4.3 million dollars?
Yes.
For how long? For one year?
That was for the three years for the-
4.3 million dollars additional-
For the fire departments as proposed.
So we have a several grand coming in, and we were, three years, we have additional $4.3 million to justify for these 16 people beside the several grand. And then after three years, then the number we're including their salary plus the $4.3 million if you want to keep those people?
Yes. And again, this doesn't include the impact to our unfunded liability, which will double next year without these people.
Okay. Got it. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. So I guess there's a couple of questions. So one, is that level of personnel necessary? Right? We're only having this conversation if it's necessary. If it isn't, then we should all feel comfortable declining the grant. So again, Chief Capelli, you applied for the grant, so you deem it necessary for public safety to, for us to get to this number? Is this the number that you've identified as what would provide the public safety for the community?
No, actually, we actually, to be in line with the region nationally and other local partners, we're actually are well far below the standards in LA County. Some of the numbers that we've presented in town hall meetings and to this council before is what we need. This was just a start to get us there. The objective is to identify the problem, which was we need more resources to respond to EMS and fire emergencies in the city. And this is a way to get us there, give us three years, or maybe six years or nine years, because we would reapply for the grant till the city could find a way to bring in some type of revenues that would cover this, so we wouldn't have to get the SAFER grant. And if not, unfortunately, the problem is we would have to let those individuals go and shut down that apparatus again. But our call for service would just go up, as they've done 30% since, I think it was since 1980, or, I'm sorry, since the last SAFER grant, it's gone up 30%.
Okay. No, I mean, I think this is important for the residents to understand, right? Because oftentimes, we look at, well, we'll just apply for grants, and grants will be the magic bullet. And we're also always, you know, being told that, well, we pay a lot, why are we not getting the same type of service? So the reality is, right now, as a city, we can afford 70 personnel just through the general fund, and we are budget neutral, we're deficit neutral. We can apply for the SAFER grant that will have three years of not complete funding, as we're hearing. But obviously, it would support the hiring of more staff. So again, I think for the residents to understand what is the cost, there's a cost to pay. Now, does that mean we approve the SAFER grant, and then within these next three years, find another revenue source for the residents of West Covina to guarantee that we have this level of staffing? Because they, we would be aware, right? We would have three years that we need to find this funding. I think the other point, though, and why I really felt this item needed to be pulled, is we are planning to fund an entire department through grants. And I think this is clear, that grants aren't free, that whenever you bring personnel, there is a pension cost, and there is going to be cost to the general fund. And so I think that definitely, I wanted the residents to know. Okay, yes, Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Thank you. Granted, we would always want to fully staff all departments. The issue is, I do remember transitioning coming in, and during that time when we had to lay off all the firemen, close, you know, remove the truck or whatever, the apparatus, there was an uproar in the community, and they were not happy. Granted, because of the times and stuff. And I want to prevent a lapse, I mean, a repeat of the situation. So I had a few things. I know you mentioned about staffing, but I mean, I do even remember when, at one time, when the fire wanted to push to go to county, and the plan was to remove and take away two fire stations. So we were going to actually have two less stations in our city, which obviously I was not for that. So when we talk about staffing at one time- Yeah, and layoff. And so at one point, your department was for that, you know, removing, going to county, removing the stations, removing, you know, letting go, you know, however that was. So, you know, coming back to this situation, obviously, I want to prevent future layoffs. And three years from now, the residents won't understand that this was a temporary grant, however we phase this and everything, they won't understand. So the, I had a few questions. The first one, why wasn't a side letter created for this grant?
So actually, the SAFER grants were actually brought to AFG and written and prepared for through FFA. They're the ones that bring this up and do it, and they did all the work for it, and they do it in conjunction with management, and we determine, I helped them with numbers and stuff like that, then we submit them. Most all the grants are done together. I just wasn't aware that a side letter, they weren't interested in at the time, I didn't know one needed to be done. I was not part of the other SAFER grants. Be honest with you, I was not a fan of SAFER grants prior to this one, where you had to have matching, you had to have other requirements. This one is purely to increase the resources, and they funded completely. So that's why we took the option to go ahead and try to apply for it, as we did the last couple of years. This is the third time we were funded, because it's a very sought-after grant throughout the whole United States, because it's a way for communities to help build it.
Yes, I understand. And they do grant, the personnel, obviously, it doesn't cover the cost of overtime, equipment, CalPERS, and all the other stuff that we have to cover. My other question is, is this grant only for brand-new firefighters to be brought in? Or can this grant also cover the cost of our current firefighters?
No, ma'am. The objective of the grant is to reach a certain, reach a certain level to, the identification is, for example, get one fire engine to a fire 90% of the time within four minutes. And like I said, we're meeting that at 20-something percent of the time. So 80% of the time, we're not meeting that. So we identify what may get us there, and this may help us. Understood, we'd have to reevaluate in three years. So you need new personnel, to fill this new resources to be available to respond to these calls.
I know we've discussed, and I know we've talked about the past of like, your staffing model. I would like to see, well, we had a time where overtime was hit. You guys were going way past and spending tons of money for overtime. Now, if your new firefighters offset that and did the fill-in to reduce overtime, and that would be a model change, I would be for that, because that helps the general fund. It's a win-win situation. So that would be something to also consider. Yeah, but that's the staffing model, and that's the overtime. Now, for this, for, I would probably consider, I mean, probably not the full load, but a certain amount of firefighters to come in, so that three years later, when you know that we are going to be, you know, those that are going to retire, or, let's just pick a number, where you guys are going to be short-staffed, you know, 10. So these 10 new firefighters that are coming in through this grant, after three years, then we technically, well, we will hire them permanently for the firefighters, so then that it's transition, and it saves the work of like, you know, recruiting new hire. I would be for that in that aspect. But, you know, creating this whole thing, and then three years reducing it, we are going to get hit, and it doesn't look good. That's just a few of my concerns. If there's a way to win-win this whole situation with the city and the firefighter, then I can be for that. But of course, it involves additional work of the numbers, additional information that we don't have. So I mean, that's where I stand. And if that's something, you know, like currently, how many do you have that are vacant currently?
So right now, the bulk of back in those years where it was really super bad is, we had, upwards, I think, for one, for 18 months, we had like 18 vacancies or 15 vacancies. We've been running very well over the last five years with one, the two vacancies. I think we have one vacancy right now in the firefighter rank, actual spot that we had to fill in overtime, which is why we're able to maintain our constant staffing overtime. The overtime number we have is strictly for constant staffing, where in the fire department, unlike most departments, if somebody goes on vacation, sick, bereavement, training, whatever, we have to have a person in that position to continue to respond to the community, where in most other, other than the public safety, we don't do that. A person's off, we don't cover them. So our overtime is not for just spending. We don't make up, or we're not able to just make overtime. It's obviously always identified to constant staffing, to keep a wheels rolling on the fire station.
That's why I said it's a model, it's your staffing model and your current staffing model, which I would have loved to see a change in that staffing model to reduce the overtime. So if you had a firefighter that is on rotation, that covers those people that are on vacation or anything, because there's always somebody out, then that rotating firefighter can cover that, then that would drastically reduce overtime. And if that's a staffing model that is implemented with this, then I would be for it, again, so that it doesn't cost the city general funds tons of money to, I mean, we're talking about millions of dollars, and here, we just reduced that in 2018, you know, to balance the budget, and then we're going to bring this in and then bring it back down. So that's just my input for that.
So we brought that to council, I don't remember when it was, and Stephanie assisted with that, to show what it would cost to have, which I think was identified as floaters at one time, that the cost was not affected to do that, to have extra, and this grant does-
I don't remember that, actually.
I don't think it was maybe-
Stephanie said no.
Yeah, we-
I, that one was, I was definitely pushing for the staffing model. That I do recall, but I'm not here to argue about that case, but I do remember staffing model was not presented.
This grant would provide, this could have to be actually bodies in a seat of new positions to actually fill the resources to respond to calls.
But the staffing model stays the same, so the overtime's going to increase. I just need that information.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and I think that the issue, okay, I have over here, the communication between you and the management, okay, I think if you guys can prepare this, okay, and communicate, okay, to them, because this is 16 people you're going to hire, okay, and the HR need to know, again, and then how much it will cost additionally? Okay, the analysis led must be, okay, to us, okay, much earlier, okay? So in that way, you both can kind of discuss and see is feasible, and not just certainly throw it to our lab, want us to approve something, okay, potentially is a major deficit spending, and we want to control our budget to make sure, okay, everything's, okay, in check. Okay, and don't forget, we just, okay, have a brand-new queen, okay, for the fire department in 2024. Okay, and we have a queen, I remember 2026, 16, 2016, we have a new queen. Okay, and now with 2024, we got another new queen. Okay, and then we have one brand-new, okay, engine, and now we have five brand-new, okay, paramedic and ambulance, and we still have a three O1. So we have got a lot of equipment right now. Okay, and that's a cost city, I don't know, 5.5 million dollars just for all this new equipment. I think since we have five brand-new, okay, ambulance, okay, I think we- I think we, now we have the, a, a new system with dispatchers to call, to pick up the phone for the fire department, and we can do the level call. So meaning what? That it's possible this you can work with the, looking to, okay? We, since we have a fire ambulance and maybe fire station have one ambulance and plus additional three as a backup, so we have an ambulance, we can contract out to help others, okay, city and, and build this team, and that can bring income to justify some of the overtime and this and that. So, so this sum of thing, then maybe you can discuss with the management, okay? And rather than just throw a big spending item to us, and the communication to the city manager department is, I think, is very vital, okay? So we can, how many work together, understand, and with all the number? So, so, so in that way, I want to move the motion to concur the city manager's recommendation to decline the safer grant.
Again...
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Thank you, mayor. In regards to this, I don't know when this grant is due. I don't know when the turnaround is for this. I, actually, when, when was this grant actually open to the department? I mean, to your department to apply? I'm just curious on the timeline.
Eight to ten months ago, I'm not sure. They're usually, they're usually a year, eight to ten months, twelve months behind.
Councilwoman, can, before you ask the next question, we do have a motion on the floor. Did someone... Councilman Contos, so we can go back to discussion, and then we can do a vote.
Thank you. No, again, it's, I mean, eight months ago. And when did you know, when did you get notified that you guys were, that it was approved?
The city was notified while I was, unfortunately, while I was still off on my injury repair. And when I came back, I...
September, okay. I, I would only approve if you know, like, in, in the next three years, the firefighter is, the fire department's going to have, let's say, some people retiring, and let's say you have a number that, let's say, there's going to be five. In, in three years, we'll be five short, then I would approve, like, okay, hiring, you know, getting, using the grant to fill in for five positions. But that's, that's the only thing I would, I would say, but...
Doesn't provide for that, but if we had five openings, we already budget for those, we would just have a test and fill those that way. That's, that would already, if we, if we had people retired, we would have a normal process of filling those in. And that's our process, always have lists available, try to get...
Yeah.
So we don't have any openings to spend the overtime.
That, that's the only thing I'm saying, like, if there is an opening, and we know that there's going to be projected openings, then I would get these, get the grant to fill in those positions, and then they transition to an actual hire after. So we save three years. It's a savings for the city, and then obviously, you already, they, you already know how they operate, and then they, they can welcome them as a permanent...
You're talking about absorbing some of those positions after the three years if we're not able to re-get the grant correct. So if there's an opening in the, in the fire department at year three, we would hire one of those from the safer grant into the fire department.
I just don't want to see them get laid off. That's the part that I, I want... No, I know, but I remember back then, we had to lay them off. And I, I can't let go of fire, you know, and that's, that's horrible for them and their families, and that's horrible for us, and, and it, it looks really bad for them.
Don't want to lay off people.
Yeah, that, that's my only concern. I don't want to get there and then tell them, okay, you're done, bye, and then we don't have any openings or feel obligated to carry them, and we can't afford them. So that's my only thing that I would say, but go ahead.
Keep it and not shut it down.
Yeah.
Continue with it.
No, I, you know, I, I think as, as we're moving forward, and especially because I believe we are going to look to hire a grant writer. And like I, like I mentioned before, we, we do plan to fund an entire health department through the grant process. I mean, this really is the type of analysis that, that needs to happen because there are going to be a lot of families that we're going to fire after grants dry up. That, that is just a reality, and that is a reality of public health. And so I think as we, as we move forward, we'll have to look at that. I think when it, when it comes, comes to this, it, since there, there really doesn't seem like an appetite to find funding for the other three years. Yeah, I, I think then this isn't something that we can move forward with because obviously, the, the council isn't, isn't looking to find a different revenue source. And we would need a revenue source to, to cover this, and that, that's a reality. But I'm, I'm hoping we are, we're setting precedent here then, that as we look to fund positions through grants, that we are also looking for the revenue to support these employees once the grants sunset or finished. And also considering the, the pension obligations that, that would come with that. Councilman Contos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's important to, for us as a council to establish and make sure that our, our departmental leaders go coordinate with the city manager and not apply for grants without letting the city manager know and providing the city manager and staff with an opportunity to coordinate together so that way it, we don't end up in a situation where the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing until the last minute. So it's just, it's just important, so, thank you.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wu with a second by Councilman Contos to adopt the city manager's recommendation for item number seven, consideration of twenty twenty-three Department of Homeland Security DHS slash Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant, EMW dash two zero twenty-three dash FF dash zero one one two three. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Epstein.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
No.
We have a vote of three, one, one.
It's approved?
Yes.
All right, let us move forward. Councilmember request, city council reports, AB one, two, three, four, conference and meeting reports. Any, any city council requests? Mother, may I request? No? Any city council comments? Councilman Contos?
Yes, I just wanted to make residents aware of, of grants that are available from the California Earthquake Authority, where if there are houses that, in, in which there is living space above a garage, or if there is crawl space below a foundation, that there is a grant money available for homeowners of, of anywhere from three to thirteen thousand dollars. So if there are folks who are interested in that, I, there should be information distributed also, but I also, if they email me, I'll make sure to send that information out to folks. The, the second item is with regard to supporting safety of kids. There has, there have been some resident requests for crossing guards at different schools. So I'd like to hear in the future from, for anyone who sees this or who is in the community, if there is an interest in, in having crossing guards at specific schools, that I, I really would like to, for us to proceed forward with coordinating with the school districts with whom we have, I think, the city manager can correct me, but I think there's an agreement where we would, we could cover for half, and the district would cover for half. I mean, you could correct me if that, on that, if I'm incorrect. But I'd like to bring that up because there is an interest in, in having a crossing guard at Hollencrest. And so, but if there are others, it, it would be just good for, for folks to please come forward to let, let us know, so that way we can be a further support to schools and the school districts and the kids to make sure to promote safety. Thank you.
City manager, did you want to clarify? Or we don't have that information for Councilman Contos?
Yes, Councilman Contos, there is an agreement, and I don't remember the terms off of my, off the top of my head, but there is a cost, a cost sharing with the school districts for crossing guards. And it is an agreement that determines the number of crossing guards and at the specific schools.
Okay, if, if, if you could email that information to, to us all. I'm sure Councilman Contos would appreciate that. All right, any, anything else? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move the motion to adjourn, please.
I can.
This concludes our meeting.